Ten o'clock, we're going to open up our regular session in May sixteenth, two thousand and eighteen. And as always, please silence your cell phones or shut them off and join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Melanie, go over the additions and deletions, please.
Additions, we have MASA, Lake County Level A Electrical Inspector, Delegation of Duties to Administrative Assistant. Deletions, VFW flag donation.
Okay, thank you, and I like the way that you put the in red there. I'm starting to adjust and get used to.
I just have, sorry, I just had a question from Melanie real quick. Sorry.
All right. With that, we're going to get right on in. Our first item is public comment.
I'd like to extend a congratulations to Mark Albertson.
Yep, thank you. That's very professional. Any other public comment? Moving on down, Lake County Level A Electrical Inspector. I did not ask Kenny to come today. I did want to keep this on the agenda and I'm comfortable to keep it on there. There was some questions and different things.
I was going to give myself brief yesterday, but I was in meetings back to back until five thirty or later. So I'll just go with confidence of Kenny's recommendation.
Okay, what we do have on the financial side of it, I'm sure you haven't had a chance to review it, is an updated analysis, preliminary budget, how a position could be funded and how it. Anne, go ahead and give us notes for you on that, which Sidney's going through.
That worksheet you have in front of you looks at the county employing a full-time Level A Electrical Inspector that meets all the state's requirements on those certifications. Kenny has done a lot of work in finding out that we could provide inspection services to adjacent counties with that person on staff. So there are income sources from other counties, from the state electrical program dollars that we would be able to receive that appear in all of our research to make that program pencil out for ourselves, for the benefit of our citizens. There are some unknowns at this point in time, but that is our best estimate and feel like it's a conservative look at what that position.
So Anne, we chatted a little bit yesterday after you did the initial one. You folks have done that, and I know we've got an adjusted one this morning. And one of the clarification points, and you did clarify it, was Kenny talked about a half-time this person only one, but that's for Lake County, it would work full-time, but half of the time it'd be spent in these other joint counties. And I think that the only, personally, the only real question here is how would we put this in the budget? Because I personally would love to see us, even though this is fast-tracking, I would love to see us get ready to make an announcement, you know, so we go through the appropriate hiring process, even though there is a candidate identified, and get this going because it's lost opportunity for services and it's lost revenue. And we figure out between now and adoption how this fits in the budget. That would be my take on this.
Thank you for that. I've already had my discussion with Anne individually about that, but I'll let her explain. But key for me is this would change the budget as far as putting the numbers in on the salary and revenue expense side, but it would not change our potential cost to general fund on the transfers. It would not change that. That's real key for me is that part right there.
I agree. It would generate the money from the state for the program, any inspections.
And that estimate that I were showing before you is probably a low estimate on what that would generate because that's looking historic electrical. We know there's going to be much more work that occurs in that area in our building department than historical levels. So again, there's some conservative things built into what you're seeing for you.
Yeah. Well, you have good numbers from the county counties or.
That's Kenny's best estimate on those hours that that person would serve in the joint counties right now. That's his best estimate.
That would be both climate and hiring?
Yes.
So Anne, my belief would be that at the end of this budget cycle, when the budget process starts next year, the committee's going to see a different revenue figure on top of cost, in addition to cost. And we're going to have a more clear picture of how the budget next year more accurately, but for this year, the conservative approach won't harm us at all.
No.
And we'll probably be pleasantly surprised with the numbers that are there, so.
What's nice about the budget is the expenses are more known. We know the expenses, it's the revenues that come in to offset those. And that's what the budget building process allows us to build, let's build those expenses knowing that the revenues may shift between permit fees, between other county contracts, between general fund. But as long as we build that expense budget to meet the goals and mission of the department and staffing levels, then we'll watch the revenues over time. But I do think we're going to see, again, upside benefits on those revenues that we are not building at this point in time.
That can be satisfactory.
So Jay, how quickly and what kind of process would we need to go through?
Well, we really have an applicant pool of one.
Yeah.
There is one A-level inspector in Clamath, Lake, and Harding counties, and we would have that person. So I don't think it makes sense to go out and post this position. If we did, even if we did have somebody that was interested, we're not going to get someone to move down here from somewhere else at twenty-five dollars an hour.
Well, the only thing I think that's been said in this is just making sure through you and legal counsel we do the right process.
Yeah, so I think the right process in this case is invite the one, make an offer to that one potential candidate.
I guess, I wasn't prepared to talk about one in that. I was today was prepared to look at is we need to go this direction. We follow all the rules and everything and give that direction to you and the department. And if it comes out what you're saying, and that's within the hiring guidelines and everything, that's the way it is.
It is.
Hold the job description together, do everything by exactly what Commissioner Shum says, by all the things. That's where I am, I am at is to not get into the weeds down there on that, but to allow the process for appropriate.
Right, part of that process is working this out with the union. I still haven't been able to talk to him, but we've gone back and forth a couple times in emails, so we're working it out.
So for today's action, Mr. Chair, what do you want to suggest is given for direction to Jay?
Yes, I, yes, I were there, and Mr. Kuzner made some good points there too. And it's not, we had the opportunity to put this in place, be in compliance with what we were told July first is going to be. Get the services on the ground for our community, our citizens that needs to be there. In this case, it actually should carry itself plus little additional revenue. We don't get that opportunity very often to work that direction, so.
So can the motion be as simple as to direct Jay to go through the appropriate processes to hire a Class A Electrical Inspector by July one?
Yep.
You know, it's almost because of the tampering and the, I won't say it's an emergency, but it's a high essence.
Are you saying be forged or by July one? Okay.
Yeah. We talked about you going through the process. My only concern, having been in supervisory government for so many years, is typically we go out to see the best candidate, but there is a process to go for one available. And that's no complications there.
Depending on the circumstances, if you have somebody in-house that's already performing that function, it makes sense to hire that person. If you know you're only going to have a pool of one, you're wasting some out there.
Well, Jay, you know the processes that we go through and that's kind of the direction. Just go through the appropriate ones and have someone hired by July one.
So I would think that legally, basically, if you're getting ready to a motion is that supportive of the reorganization and has the required components, I brought together on job description, union talk, all that.
Yep. It's all encompassing.
Encompass all that sense that keeps us, we're improving the position. You're going to make it, hired.
Correct. I'll get back to my earlier statement, follow the process, but have career and open to the public, your rationale.
That's my motion.
I'll second the motion. The motion's been made and seconded to approve the position in the Building Department for an A-level inspector and follow the appropriate hiring process to make that happen.
And even though it was discussed yesterday, I'd always like for the people who watched today's to give a short synopsis of the A-Electrical and the rationale. It's a highly qualified decision that we don't have the capability.
Kenny is an A-level plumbing inspector. And in order to become an A-level Electrical Inspector, you have to have a journeyman's license. You have to be a signing supervisor. It's virtually, I mean, not impossible, but you're not going to find anybody, any tradesman, that's a journeyman plumber and a journeyman electrician at the same time. This doesn't happen, so nobody has both of those. So every jurisdiction has to work out some way to build that problem.
But Jay, simply put, the A-level is they can do any electrical inspection.
All commercial, plans, plan reviews, all of that, yeah. So we're talking about Red Rocks, solar projects, hospital, you know.
And as the discussion was yesterday, there's some people locally that are right there at that that I don't know how fast they can get those credentials. I know one that has taken a certain test, so there is potential pools, pools of people out there that can. Maybe not this fast.
Yeah, in the future.
Yeah, but there's options possibly out there. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you. Thank you board for supporting that. And I'm not going to take any credit for it. Kenny and others done all the work to help keep us in compliance on that. Thanks to them and everybody else. All right, next enterprise zone resolution. And Betty asked if she needed to be here. I said no, and if we have any questions, she's available by phone. Ginger's sitting here also. That's the conduit of that, since he's got too many. So yesterday we had quite an overview on this resolution on enterprise zone. So with entertain the motion part, it's board filled. If any needs be, that will hold on the phone.
No. I'll move that way, except for resolution to renew the Lakeview County Enterprise Zone of this area.
I'll say again.
Motion's been made and seconded to accept resolution number two zero one eight dash zero four dash C, read authorization of renewal and revise Lakeview, Lake Falls.
Yeah. Yeah, City of Lakeview down there.
I'm sorry, I never got that till I agreed with Lake County Enterprise Zone. Any further discussion?
For the public, it's a joint sponsorship of the town of Lakeview and the county of Lake. And I believe it was shared yesterday that the town of Lakeview have already done their part and went and sponsored a resolution for it. Yeah, we'll fill in that second gap.
All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Mediator in O U, we had that discussion yesterday. Go ahead, Anne.
The mediator in O U before you is from Judge Nichols for mediation services that are required by circuit court in different custody cases. And so we did have someone within Lake County that resigned recently and in his process to keep the services local, found Judge Simpson to provide mediation services for us. So it makes it flexible for our citizens and then also keeps dollars local. So that's the motivation.
I'll make a motion, we approve the order of appointing mediator memorandum of understanding as presented.
Sir. Motion's been made and seconded to approve the order of appointing mediator memorandum of understanding as presented. Any further discussion? Just a comment, I think Lane may be very good at that. I like his personality and knowledge. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Delegation of duties to Administrative Assistant. That assistant is Melanie Buzini. We had a discussion yesterday on this. Did you, and we do have more information that we just haven't put in our package. Is any more discussion needed or clarification?
There was, yeah, just the policies, the financial policies were sent to you so you can review those when you have some time. It just kind of spells out what each of us in the Business Services and Treasurers Department, and now Melanie, kind of what our duties are and how we are protecting county assets with segregation of duties across those positions. Again, I think, thank you for your support in this venture. Again, I feel like every time we have a position that becomes open, we really should evaluate the costs versus the benefits and be willing to try things at different times to see if it works for our citizens and for our staff. So I think so far Melanie's been great at learning things and she's a very quick study. So already she's looking at some of the documentation that I would require signatures on and we knew that. So the other thing that I didn't really talk about, but I thought about this morning, it will actually give her a broader understanding of county operations. I feel like when I first started at the county, I worked in the council payroll and payroll. And I, because of all that information you see, and for me, if you understand where dollars are coming from and going, you understand a lot about county operations. So Melanie will start seeing some of that kind of information that would kind of broaden her knowledge of county operations. I think it's going to be, it's going to be a, I feel like it's really going to be a great partnership and a great way to move forward for us.
Well, I think the other beauty, Anne, and it's been stated by everybody, but it's a good thing to try. We should be that open-minded to try things. We know it may work great and it may not, but as you described, I'm all like the video, it will work great.
I have one more question.
Yes.
Anne, I should know this, I never asked you this on our audit. Does this help with that always being the signature part of it?
No, because that aspect has to do with Nikki.
Okay, that's what I was thinking.
We do have segregation of duties listed that try to alleviate some of those authorities that Nikki can have and can process, but in a small organization, there's just times you cannot get around that. But we are trying to do everything we can for those double checks, those reviewing processes, those, you know, signing stamp, you know, where, who holds them in state car. So we do the best we can.
Has no impact on this decision, but it was a curious question.
So Mr. Chair, was there any, changing gears just ahead, was there any discussion, did we have it on? You were talking about signing, bank signing. Is there anything there for today or not?
I do, we do want to have a motion that you guys are approving, Melanie Buzini, you sign on certain Lake County accounts, replacing.
And it's actually now written in this, and so we're, yes, it's important.
I'd like to build on what you said earlier about broadening the understanding from the perspective of your overall operation. Most of my career with the federal government was in the disciplinary, and it really adds an understanding of all how different functions comes together and support each other.
And I might be biased in feeling like the money kind of shows you the way, because that's what I do. But I do feel like that's.
It's kind of followed the money.
It is.
But we're sure the money is how for ourselves.
So entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion, we approve the recommended delegation of duties to our administrative assistant as proposed by our county treasurer.
Sir. Motion's been made and seconded to accept the delegation of duties to administrative assistant as written in that policy, isn't it? In their policy. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Thank you.
Appreciate the people's time.
Lane County I G A, this is three different motions we talked about yesterday. Did we need Dave to come in for this? I'm comfortable myself.
You know, I don't have it packaged in front of me, I don't have, if we're copies, but.
Well, if that's the case, then I'm going to make a motion, we approve the P A S, that's the web-based property information support. It's up slightly over last year from six thousand to six thousand one hundred and eighty dollars.
I'll second the motion. Motion's been made and seconded to accept the P A S, our web-based property information support. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries, and this, these are intergovernmental agreements. So we have two more.
Yeah, I'll make a motion, we approve the tax map and G I S mapping support. Had a slight increase, not really slight, but an increase from seventy-five dollars an hour to eighty dollars an hour as was presented.
Motion's been made and seconded to accept the I G A tax map and G I S mapping support at eighty dollars per hour. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye, motion carries, we have one more.
The T R software support, last year was twenty-five thousand. It's going to be twelve thousand eight hundred and seventy-five this year. And it's going to end, that support's going to end on December thirty-first, two thousand and eighteen.
Second motion, motion's been made and seconded to accept I G A on T R software support as presented. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. All right. Mesa, MASA.
Yeah, MASA Medical Transport. The only update I have for you today is we will be able to offer this plan to those employees who are not benefit-eligible. There would be a payroll deduction, they would have to pay for it, but county would have to pay for all benefit-eligible employees.
So we're talking for our time, basically, part-time.
So the real question today is when do we implement?
Yeah, that's the question.
That's our question.
That's you.
Yeah, for you.
So, well, I pondered it last night, and you know, quite frankly, as much as I said July one, and it was just a problem as much as anything, as a budget issue or a budget thought. We want our employees to have the best that we can afford to do for them and the protections that we can, the best protection. So I somewhat rescind my notion that it would be July one, and I'm fine with making it effective as quickly as it can be done. And that's a motion.
Well, I was getting prepared to make that motion, thinking that I wasn't going to get it. Didn't know if I'd get a second, but.
What would be the impact to your budget?
Do you mean to start earlier than July first?
Yeah.
Well, we were talking about forty-eight hundred dollars for the year.
All total.
Total for all, there's only seventy-nine employees, not eighty-four, I grew counting.
So if we didn't have, it would be four hundred dollars. There we go.
And that's general from signing.
Yeah.
So I'll make a motion to move into the coverage of Mesa, MASA, to take effect the first of June.
Mr. Chair, I think I already made that.
I'll second your motion.
Okay.
Your motion then was as soon as possible, right?
Yeah.
Okay, not first of June, but as soon as.
I didn't hear, I thought you were making an explanation yesterday.
The first of June is a sin.
Turn them up.
Okay. So first of June is your motion?
Yes. I'll second the motion. Motion's been made and seconded, apologize, I didn't hear they were making a motion, to accept, I guess it'd be agreement with MASA for coverage for our employees effective June first. Any further discussion?
Again, just for the audience, so they don't have to go back to yesterday's. MASA is medical transport interface in the United States and Canada.
Yeah, and it also covers, it also covers not only the air, but the ambulance, which whenever you have those unfortunate things, sometimes that ambulance ride itself is quite expensive also. But a non-county employee was telling me the other day that his flight was seventy-one thousand dollars. Oh my gosh.
That would be devastating.
And depending on the circumstances, let's say you're flown to Portland, that would be about seventy thousand dollars. The ambulance ride from there to O H S U is about fifteen, depending on the circumstances.
Is how much?
Fifteen thousand.
For the ambulance ride?
For a child that's in distress, it was that much, yeah.
Oh my gosh, I had no idea that the ambulance could be that much. I was in the five to six hundred dollar range, I'm a little dated, I guess.
The big difference between a small town and a big town.
Wow, okay, go ahead.
Refresh my memory, does this also provide for transport back home?
No, that is the Platinum Plan, which every employee will get the option to upgrade at their own cost. But that plan allows employees to be covered worldwide, no matter, you know, if they're in a family to you, get you and your belongings and loved ones home. It just has a whole nother level of.
I remember some discussion earlier, just maybe make sure I have a separation of that.
But just one more comment to just to note, and I don't guess we really need to, but this has fallen the recommendation of our insurance committee. So we need to acknowledge and thank them for the work.
Yes, and Jay, I would also request, not as part of this motion, but just so it's not lost, that you put together a small little email relative to what the difference is and what we're approving today versus what we've had historically, so. And you're going to probably speak to the upgrade that people can do on their own. But so it clearly shows our employees what their coverage really is now. Because that, a lot of people will just see that there's something new if they didn't pay attention to that. And I think we need to make that very clear to folks that we do have.
Very good point.
Coverage you've never had before.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, and the insurance committee for the work.
Yes, Jay.
We have minutes of May first and May second.
You what?
I forgot to bring them this morning, I'm sorry.
Did we receive them?
Yeah.
I think you had some correction, or Tim did or something, somebody did.
I think, I think I did, but I just ate something a lot too.
I'm sorry.
No, that's all right. No, we did make some changes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I had them on my list this morning, but.
I'll make a motion that we approve, minutes of May first and the second, with the corrections.
I'll second the motion, motion's been made and seconded to approve the. Motion's been made and seconded to approve the amendments of May 1st and 2nd with correction. Any further discussion?
I was asking, I'll make first correct.
Yes. Yeah, you were, you're in care for regular session.
Yes, I believe you're correct.
Yeah, I have to go to Ben on my...
All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries. There was no executive session for today. I mean, hey, with legal counsel, there's nothing you need to bring forward.
He, sorry, he intends to be at the fork off session though.
Okay.
That's the first one, is it?
The sixth.
June.
15 seconds.
With that, we will adjourn. Is that what you talked about, that adjourned at 10:30? By the sections to spare.